Vote aye, those opposed no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no, zero.
Ayes, forty, no, zero. The motion is agreed to. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a floor substitute and I'd like to waive the reading of the floor substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask the body to agree to the floor substitute and speak to that.
The senator has the floor.
Thank you. This is the food truck bill where we are aspiring to allow food trucks and those small businesses to register in one locality where they have their commercial kitchen and pay a business license fee in that locality. These license fees are about $500 and we want them to continue to register in other counties where they go to offer services so that they can pay their BPO and pay their food taxes, but not to pay a licensing fee for a small business. This can be up to $5,000 a year if they live in a greater, in an area like Greater Richmond or Tidewater where they're going to a lot of localities. So it took a little while to get some agreement on this bill and that's what the amendment is before you. To accommodate the counties, we are limiting this to three trucks in a business and to two years for now. I would not say that the counties are completely happy with that agreement, but I think we've reached a consensus that'll support these businesses and allow us to move forward. And with that, I request you agree to the substitute.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the floor substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is agreed to. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Could I, could we engross and advance this bill now to its third reading?
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed and advanced to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed and advanced to its third reading. Senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. May we now suspend the rules and dispense with a third constitutional reading?
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be dispensed with? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no, zero.
Ayes, forty, no, zero. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading is dispensed with. The senator from Henrico, Senator Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. President. In having explained the bill, I move that it pass.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall Senate Bill 1425 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-nine, knows one.
Ayes, thirty-nine, knows one. Senate Bill 1425 passes.
Regular calendar, Senate bills on third reading. Senate Bill 1168. A bill relating to the Department of Professional and Occupational Regulation Regulatory Boards' Expungement of Disciplinary Records. We have a floor substitute.
The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, after going through this about 10 seconds ago, I'd like to reconsider the vote by which this bill was ordered to be engrossed and advanced to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the vote by which the bill was engrossed and advanced to its third reading be reconsidered? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-nine, knows zero.
Ayes, thirty-nine, knows zero. The motion is agreed to. The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, I'd like to waive the reading of the floor substitute.
The question is, shall the reading of the floor substitute be waived? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The reading of the floor substitute is waived. The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, I'd like to explain the floor substitute.
The senator has the floor.
And agree to the floor substitute.
You have the floor.
So, Mr. President, what this does is, in life, we can get expungement and we can get forgiven for our little misgivings in life. Well, what this does, this bill does, is under DEPOR, Department of Professional Occupational Records, this allows you to have a little mistake or two. Nothing harsh, not a major violation, nothing of moral interpretive assault or battery or damage of real personal property. What this does is if you have a little hiccup in your life, this allows you to have that little hiccup erased from your record so it's not there until the day you die. And, Mr. President, what this does is this goes to DEPOR at least five years after you've gone through and had that little hiccup in your life. It requests it going in front of a disciplinary board that will review the record and then make a recommendation whether this could or cannot be expunged. Again, these are just for little hiccups like, for example, if you created a contract or a subcontract and you missed a paragraph, you were cited for that. That stays on your record forever and there's no way to have it expunged. So it's little hiccups in life like that, Mr. President. So with that, I hope we would agree to the floor substitute and engross this fine bill and advance it to its third reading.
I thank the senator. We will take up the agreement motion first. The question is, shall the floor substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The floor substitute is agreed to. Junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, if we could engross and advance this to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed and advanced to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed and advanced to its third reading. Junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, if we could suspend the rules and dispense of the third constitutional reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended and the third constitutional reading be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-seven, knows three.
Ayes, thirty-seven, knows three. The rules are suspended and the third constitutional reading is dispensed with. The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, if we could pass this fine forgiving bill, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
I thank the senator.
Mr. President.
Senator from Bass, Senator De.
I'd like to speak to that motion.
The senator has the floor.
I appreciate the efforts of the gentleman to try to limit the impact of this bill, but it still changes the basic nature of an expungement and it sets a terrible precedent. Look at, look down here, lines 21 and 22 explain what the sorts of violations that can be expunged from one's record. A lesser regulatory violation that includes anything other than moral interpretive assault and battery or damage to real or personal property. I would suggest that many of the things covered by those three are going to be subject to criminal charges already. This essentially allows any violation, any violation, any founded case before DEPOR to be expunged. As I explained the other day, the nature of expungement is that you can get charges that have been dismissed expunged from your record. This is not like, this is akin to having a charge that has been reduced. Say malicious wounding that's been reduced to disorderly conduct. Expunged. That, you can't do that in the criminal law. And if we pass this bill, that's the bill you're going to see next year or the year after. And I want you to look over at lines 40 through 42. Nothing in this section prevents this information from going to a, law enforcement or governmental body is permitted by law. As my friend, the gentleman from King George said the other day, what about the consumer? What about the person who is supposed to be protected by these regulations? They're left out in the cold. I'd suggest this is a bad bill, it's dangerous precedent, and I hope you will not pass it.
I thank the senator. For what purpose is the senator from Prince William, Senator McPike rise?
Mr. President, I rise to speak against the measure.
The senator has the floor.
I think my, my friend from Bath County has spoken eloquently to the issues at hand. This, this bill seeks to, once again, give more powers to hide bad actors. More protections, again, to business than we do to give to individuals. This is backwards. This is really backwards where we give paper entities more rights than we do citizens in Virginia. That's not the message that I can support. We need more transparency, more assistance in protecting our consumers, and I hope the body will defeat the measure.
I thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 1168? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1168 pass? All in favor of the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, twelve, knows twenty-seven.
Ayes, twelve, knows twenty-seven. Senate Bill 1168 fails.
Senate Bill 1025. A bill relating to tethering of animals, adequate shelter, and space.
Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill pass.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Mr. President and members, this bill requires dog owners to unhook them from a tether in the case of extreme weather watch in the hope that they can get to shelters to protect themselves. Many times, dogs that are tied up cannot get to the shelter because of tether being tangled around obstacles. I have stripped many of the concerns from this bill that were raised last year and now have the support of more than 40 local shelters and rescue groups who endorse this measure. This bill defines extreme weather as weather warning and advisory. These are when extreme winter weather, extreme heat come to Virginia during a tornado, hurricane, or other emergency. This bill also supported by the Attorney General and the Animal Control Officers. It is giving direction. The question was asked, what if a weather warning which came about when you were not home? My answer is that if you are going to take on the responsibilities of being a pet owner, we must bear some responsibility for ensuring that they are safe. If you leave your pet tied up 24 hours, seven days a week, this bill will require that you start paying attention to weather forecast. If a weather watch becomes a warning, like we have been experiencing this week, we should unlock your dog and keep in those shelters. Dog died in Virginia every winter in summer because they are left in this kind of weather. Mr. President, I move this bill pass.
I thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 1025? Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola, for what purpose is Senator rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I speak in favor of the bill.
The senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note that a person I think many of us respect, Rachel Carson, who received a Presidential Medal of Freedom, known biologist and author and conservationist, once said, "Until we have the courage to recognize cruelty for what it is, whether its victim is human or animal, we cannot expect things to be much better in this world." I think this bill gives us an opportunity to vote and make things much better. I urge the body to pass the bill.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 1025 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, twenty-nine, knows eleven.
Ayes, twenty-nine, knows eleven. Senate Bill 1025 passes.
Senate Bill 1242. A bill relating to alcoholic beverage control, mixed beverage restaurant license penalties.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask the bill pass and speaking of the bill.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, this is more work product out of the ABC Subcommittee that came out to try to address disparity that we had between different types of businesses. And this bill does two things. One, it allows ABC to stop selling spirits to restaurants when it fails to submit its food beverage ratio report or in bars for 30 days after it was due. And we call that the Spruill Amendment because Senator Spruill brought that from his constituency. And then the other thing it does is it does not actually change the ratio, but what it does do is it sets up a secondary system to allow restaurants that want to specialize in high-end spirits to calculate their food beverage ratio based on the amount of spirits sold rather than the price charged for such spirits. And, Mr. President, there was a lot of work that went into this bill. I know there has been some opportunities or some challenges to the bill and not everybody that was supposedly part of the working group is completely happy with it, but as far as the Subcommittee goes, there was unanimity with regard to getting this out and trying to make sure that we're not alleviating businesses that want to do business in the Commonwealth by restricting their opportunity. That's the bill, Mr. President.
I thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson rise.
Gentlemen, yield for a question.
Senator yield?
Absolutely.
Senator yield, you have the floor.
I'd ask the gentleman, I'm looking at the language online, 142 of the bill saying, if the restaurant specializes in the sale of high-end spirits, and I'll ask this as a compound question. First of all, is there a ratio for that? And secondly, what is a high-end spirit?
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to do my best to do that. So, under the direction to the ABC, to Travis Hill, they're going to come up with a mechanism in which to kind of gauge that, but the, the lower ratio that they're having to deal with on that would be based on the amount per liter of the item. And we're leaving that authority up to ABC. It's narrowly defined. I think when we got done talking at the end of this and my colleagues that are part of the, the working group can probably elaborate a little bit more on it as well, is that we're not talking a big group as far as businesses that are coming in there. The estimate was maybe five or six, maybe a little bit more.
Further questions, Mr. President?
Further question? With Senator yield?
Oh, absolutely. And I'd ask the gentleman, so if you say five or six, you're talking about five or six ABC establishments in the whole state?
Mr. President, I would say yes.
Senator has the floor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank the senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 1242? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1242 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, thirty, knows ten.
Ayes, thirty, knows ten. Senate Bill 1242 passes.
Senate Bill 1024. A bill relating to carrying dangerous weapon to place of religious worship.
Senator from Loudoun, Senator Black.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senate Bill 1024, first, I urge passage of it.
Senator has the floor.
And speaking to it. We, we have had a couple of incidents involving shootings at religious institutions. We had one involving a Sikh temple, which was more in the nature of sort of assassination, drive-by, or something like that. But I think when we had the shooting that occurred at the, at the African-American church in South Carolina, it really sent shockwaves through all churches because it really highlighted the tremendous vulnerability of people when they were attending church services. These folks are uniquely vulnerable, as we all know, because they're lined up in a, in a church pew. Exiting the pew is very difficult and it makes them sort of a, the ultimate target of someone who intends to inflict mayhem on the congregation. The, the defenses really sort of boil down to either you cower in place or you fight back. And I have been kind of amazed, I did not realize this, but churches across this country and across the Commonwealth have implemented procedures to defend themselves. They, they reacted very much to that shooting in South Carolina. And so there, I will tell you, there are a lot of concealed carry weapons being, being used, excuse me, in churches across the Commonwealth. The, basically, under this, under this rule, it repeals the, the, what I think is a rather unusual special provision for churches that limits concealed carry. And basically, it applies the traditional concealed carry rules to churches just as it would to Walmarts or, or any other place. It gives the church control over whether firearms are carried or whether they're not. So it's up to the individual church. In any event, I, I think, I think it is, it is not appropriate to, to single out churches. There really is no particular reason to do it and it makes them especially vulnerable. For that reason, I urge you to vote in favor of Senate Bill 1024. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from Northern Chesapeake, Senator Spruill rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking in opposition to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President and members, I caution you about this bill. The question is that every day, we have a pastor coming here and they pray to us. They pray for God for our safety, to pray to God that we do the right thing. And those of you who believe in the Bible, you believe in it. Psalm number 46 says, "God is our refuge and strength, a very pleasant help in trouble." Let me use the black community for example, that whenever there are the problem, that we address, that we turn to the church and we call on God. And I'm pretty sure there are those who can if they choose to bring a gun. All the shootings that we have had all across the South in the black churches, also in Jewish churches, you never heard one that says they bring a gun in the church because we rely on God. Then, Mr. Chairman, if you, if those of you who have your scripture with you, if you turn to Psalm 123, it says, "If it hadn't been the Lord who was on our side, where would I be?" But the first one said, "Where would Israel be?" But where would I be? Because we truly believe that it was God that would give us safety. So we say our safety net in the church is in God. Now, so we are saying to, but this bill, we are saying that we no longer trust in God because I'm going in that building and carry my gun because God is not the safe person. And we always say in our church that God will make a way somehow. And so I truly believe that, that amidst all the trouble that we may have through the years, have always had all these killings, what no one has ever said in the church, we want to bring our guns in church. When we start doing that, then we no longer trust in God, then we gonna trust in the guns. And if there is one place that God is silent, let him have the church, nothing else. We have foolishly took prayer out of school because some wanted that way because they truly didn't believe in prayer, not because they don't do that, because of votes. They were concerned by not being voted again, so we took prayer out of school. And now we want to say, let's take God out of the church and bring our guns in the church. I'm saying to you, this is not right. How come all the pastors, how come all the priests, how come all religious groups have not flood this place and say to us, do something about it, put guns in church? Where are they? Only you got those who are us who are politicians, we're doing it because of votes. Where are they? They should be up there, up there where you are right now, full, saying, do something about it, put guns into the church because we are not safe because God is not our refuge anymore. So do it. And I'm just here to tell you this, that all the trouble that we may have, still God is God. Also, it says that God would be with me while I'm alive during the time of death. God is still there. And you would know sometimes when you have a heartache, when things come to your family and crying, you call on God. When someone is about to die or someone is sick, you call on God. You believe him then. You believe that this loved one is sick and I pray to God to please heal this person because you truly believe that God will make a way somehow. But now they're shooting in the church, so now you're going to say, bring that gun to church because I'm trusting God for this, but I don't trust in God in my church. If there's any way you can trust God, let it be the church. Mr. President and members, please, let's depend on God, on this one. Let God have something. We don't take prayer away from him. Let's not take God out of our church. Bless your heart.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola rise?
Well, I'm, Mr. President, I rise to speak in opposition to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
I think my points will not be quite as eloquent as the points by my colleague and The faith communities in my district, many of them have come and said they really don't want this choice. They really don't want to be faced with the opportunity to either allow guns or not. So as we delved into this, I just want to inform the Senate that Harvard University analyzed the data from the National Crime Victimization Survey and found that people with guns actually only used them in defense of themselves or others nine-tenths of the time. But more often, the average person uses a gun because they're scared or they're angry, they want to settle a score. It's, it's not because they're trying to protect a life or defend themselves. And when you're in heated situations, I know many of us are involved in our churches, some of us are on our church committees and our governing bodies, surprisingly enough, church politics can be pretty heated, can be, can be pretty divisive sometimes. This is really not a place where you want a gun. I think we should go back to relying on our churches being places of refuge and safety. I ask that you defeat this bill. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from Chesterfield, Senator Chase rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to speak in favor of this bill.
Senator has the floor.
I'd just like to remind the body that in South Carolina, just to the south of us, the state senate mourned one of its own following the mass shooting at an African Methodist Episcopal Church in Charleston. Senator Clementa Pickney, who is a pastor of Emmanuel AME Church, was present during a Bible study when the alleged shooter opened fire, killing the senator and eight others. The state Legislative Black Caucus issued a statement mourning the loss of a mighty statesman and a man of God who will long be remembered for his integrity and servant nature. Senator Vincent Sheehan, who sat next to Pickney while in session, eulogized his colleague, "The most gentle of all 46 of us in the chamber, the best of all 46 of us in this chamber is the one who lost his life." Mr. President, sadly, even though the intent of those who attend church is good and we are there to worship, but unfortunately, they are those who would do harm to those of us who want to worship. And it is the right of every pastor to make that determination for their own congregation. And for that reason, Mr. Pastor, Mr. Pastor, Mr. President, I would encourage the body to support this bill so that we can continue to worship in peace and protect those that would desire to worship in the church and protect themselves and their members. Unfortunately, we don't live in a society that respects churches anymore, as can be found in a town hall that I had in my church. With that, Mr. President, I simply ask that we pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to rise in opposition to Senate Bill 1024.
Senator has the floor.
And say that I'm assured that Senator Pickney, the late pastor of Mother Emanuel AME And say that I'm assured that Senator Pickney, the late pastor of Mother Emmanuel AME Church, would be in opposition to this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is the junior senator from Richmond City, Senator McClellan rise?
Speaking to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that there is a difference of opinion about whether carrying a gun will keep you safe or not. But I want to reiterate that among the African-American churches, not just in my district, but in the districts of Legislative Black Caucus members, which is why we have taken a position against this bill, we are extremely concerned about the proliferation of gun violence, but we have a different reaction, in that the church should be where you can go and feel safe, and not wonder, "Is the person sitting next to me carrying a gun? Is the person across from me carrying a gun?" And that is why this bill makes many of our religious leaders and congregants very uncomfortable. And I echo what the senator from Hampton has said. The Legislative Black Caucus in South Carolina did not rush to allow or expand who had guns in churches in response to that tragedy. They actually also were concerned about making sure that gun violence is reduced. And there are many who believe that the more guns that there are in a specific location, the more likely one is going to be used. And when one is used, law enforcement has said time and time again, when they come and there's an active shooter situation, regardless of where it is, it is very difficult to determine, "Are you the original shooter? Or are you someone trying to stop him?" And it makes it very difficult for them to know how to react. And for those reasons, I ask that you vote against the bill.
Thank the senator. For what purpose does the senator from Rockingham, Senator Obenschein rise?
Mr. President, I rise to speak in favor of the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, I'll try and be brief. You know, I've heard long ago that there are many differences between Republicans and Democrats. One of them is that relates to guns. I know that there are a lot of Republicans out there, believe it or not, who don't like guns. You may not believe it, but I'm telling you, there are a lot of Republicans who don't like guns. But the difference is, a Republican who doesn't like a gun, doesn't buy one. Democrats who don't like guns, they don't want anybody to buy one. You know, we've been talking about choice a lot. And that's all this bill is about, is about choice, the ability of churches to make their own choices. I may want to go to a church that has a sign on the door that says, "No firearms allowed." This bill says that church has the right to make its own choice. Before anybody gets too spun up over this, I want you to know what it is that we're doing here. All this bill does is repeals three lines from the Virginia Code. And they are probably three of the most ineffective lines that are anywhere in the code. What they say is, "If any person carry a, any gun, pistol, bowie knife, dagger, or other dangerous weapon," lawyers in here, listen up, "without good and sufficient reason to a place of worship while a meeting for religious purposes is being held at such place, he shall be guilty of," what kind of a felony? Oh, it's a class four misdemeanor, okay? Do I have a good and sufficient reason? I'd like to meet the lawyer in this chamber who cannot craft a good and sufficient reason that anybody who may choose to carry a bowie knife, or a gun, or a pistol into any place couldn't avoid prosecution under this statute. This bill is simply about making sure that our places of worship have the option to adopt the same policies that any of our businesses, any other public place has the ability to Accordingly, I would ask members of the body to consider strongly voting for choice and voting for this bill.
For what purpose is the senator from Grayson, Senator Carrico rise?
Speak to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the body, not being a lawyer here, maybe one of the lawyers in here can answer this question, but as you heard the section of this code being read, it says the purpose of the bill would be that we're trying to repeal to a place of worship while a meeting of religious purpose is being held. So many churches in southwest Virginia, in my district, now because of the cost to heat a church up and to keep the lights on and everything else, on Wednesday nights or prayer meeting nights, someone from their home willingly opens up their home and asks to do the Bible studies and the religious service in their home. And because I really haven't seen a technical definition of a place of worship, would it not then prohibit the individual in the home who actually owns the home, who's having a place of worship, a violation of carrying a gun in his own house? So we're talking about repealing a code where, a section of the code where it probably doesn't even define today what most people are doing in the region that I live in. If someone's having a place of worship and someone from Northern Virginia comes to their home, they could make a complaint that they have a gun, just because they don't like guns. So I think the definition is definitely skewed. I think it needs to be repealed. I think there's no definition to this code as to what that place of worship is.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is the senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. Speak to the bill.
Thank the senator. You have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, I had zero plans to speak on this bill. No, I mean it this time. Let me tell you something. Let me tell you something. There is a way around any statute in that code book. The simplest law, the most effective law ever written, had four words to it, "Thou shalt not kill." Okay, now there's a word, there's a way to excuse or to get around every statement in every code book. The reason why we put words in the code is not just to prosecute people or not prosecute people, it's also to state our values. When we say we don't want guns in places of religious worship, it's not because we want to get people on class four misdemeanors, which my colleague has accurately pointed out as basically a slap on the wrist, it's not because we're trying to trap gun owners or prosecute people that are attending Bible studies in Grayson County or other places, it's because we're stating a value. A house of worship is different. It's not the same as a bar, it's not the same as an office, it's not the same as a public place, it's a different place. We are making a statement of values. That's why we have it there. Now, if we don't want that value, if we don't think it's a different place, then go ahead and vote for this bill. If you think it's like any other place, go ahead and vote for this bill. But for me, when I walk into a house of worship, it humbles me, because I know that I'm in a place where I need to act and be my best, and that to me means, that means putting down your firearm. Now, that's just me. Maybe that's just my values. But this is a statement of values. It's not about prosecuting people, or trying to put people in jail, or trap law-abiding gun owners, of which I'm one. It's about making a statement of values. That's all we're doing. So let's make a statement of values, you know, and again, I'm not here to criticize anybody else, but this is not about a crime control bill, or trying to prevent, it's about stating our values. Let's state our values. Thank you.
Senator, for what purpose is the senior senator from Fairfax, Senator Sasslaw rise?
Speak to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
You know, many of these bills that we see on the floor concerning firearms are put there, and I'm constantly told endlessly that the only thing that can stop a bad guy with a gun is a good guy with a gun. And that almost never happens. And just give you a couple of instances that I know of, or that have been brought to my This Congresswoman from Arizona got shot a few years ago, Gabriel Giffords. There were two people in that crowd that had guns, and they told the police they were afraid to use them for fear of hitting innocent people. The other that was brought to my attention was years ago, when we had a bill in Senate courts, and I think at the time Senator Stolli from Virginia Beach may have been chair. A fellow got up, I think he was from Loudon, I'm not sure, and he spoke in favor of this one particular bill. And it had been within the last six or seven months, out in Los Angeles in the airport, there was a shooting at the Israeli desk, and I think one of their agents, ticket agents, I think was killed. And he mentioned, had he been in there, been able to take a gun into the airport, he could have prevented this. Well, there was a woman sitting in the audience, apparently, that heard the whole story, and she called their embassy, and she said that she kept trying to, without success for a few weeks, to get through to their security director. When she did, at least the story that she told, was that he asked, was this fellow that she was talking about a uniformed policeman? And she told him, "No." And he told her, and he had a gun, and she said he would have had one. She was told by this individual that we would have instantly killed him and then sent a letter of condolences to his wife. That's what would have happened. They would have, they would have seen him with that gun, and they would have instantly killed him. And we've had this bill before us before. I can't ever remember, I mean, there may be one somewhere, but I can't remember a single clergyman coming in saying, "We need to repeal the existing law." Not a one. And if there's one in Virginia, I'm not aware of it. Not a single one. So I don't see what possible good can come from this bill, other than more deaths. And I would hope that we wouldn't send this on to the House. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is the senator from Roanoke County, Senator Suterline rise?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the same sentiment as the senator from Fairfax City, in that I didn't plan to speak to this either. I hold this crazy notion, though, that the law exists to be upheld, and that it should be both clear and enforceable. And one of the major influences on that thinking is for years, hearing one of the senior statesmen in this building saying that if you want to send a message, go see Western Union. And that it, that, that's why we don't put things like that in the law, just to make statements. We do resolutions for that. And I think the reason that this is such a, I mean, it's a bad law. And it's not, if you disagree on the policy, you might think it's a bad law, but when you put something in the code that says, "You can't do something unless you have a good reason to do it." Well, okay, I mean, we can write a whole bunch of bills like that, and we could just go on our merry way. But this bill, the reason that you don't hear as much about it, the current law, is because if you go to churches throughout the Commonwealth, you don't have to go to Grayson County, you can go to churches in Fairfax County, you can go to churches in Alexandria, and there are folks that have firearms there. And you don't see it, but you know, and some of them will tell you, they carry concealed, as they have a right to. And that's something that some of those churches have even encouraged their folks to do. And that's something that makes sense, was something that I've gotten emails about, and I had a very nice person come visit me yesterday and said, "Senator Suterline, you cannot vote for Senate Bill 1024, because it's going to put guns in churches." And I said, "I've got news for you, those firearms are already in churches." So I don't think that this bill is really any shift in policy at all, because of the sufficient good reason that's already been discussed. This is really just a cleanup bill, and we've talked about it far too long, and I've also talked about it far too long. So I hope we'll pass the bill.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is the senator from Prince William, Senator McPike rise?
Mr. President, I rise to speak against the measure.
Senator has the floor.
I thought my seatmate summed it up quite nicely, had some fantastic arguments that really hit home on this issue. But listen, listening to some of my colleagues speak today, I have to call it a little bit of memory on this issue, okay? I submitted a bill in 2017 to deal with this, Senate Bill 1458, which clarified, in fact, struck from the code, good and sufficient reason, provided, and then shifted the authority to our pastors, priests, and others, and pastoral councils, that they can determine who can carry within their place of worship, in their place that where they're going to pray. But Courts Committee didn't like it. So evidently, they can pick and choose, and choose not to clean up language, and forget about it here when we're debating it on the floor, well, there's actually a real opportunity to make that change in the code, clear up the issues that we spent a half hour debating, but that option's not on the table. And therefore, I hope we defeat this measure.
Thank the senator. For what purpose is the senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove rise?
Speak to the bill, Mr. President.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, we've heard quite a few interesting comments on this bill. It seems to be a fairly straightforward, simple bill, that would allow an individual church to make its own valued judgments. We heard about values. Well, you have your values, I have my values, your church has values, my church has values. Let's not try to impose your values on the values of others when it comes to these places of worship. In addition, we heard about a university that had some incredulous statistics. Let's always remember what Benjamin Disraeli said, "There's three types of liars: liars, damn liars, and statistics." I've never heard the ridiculous numbers that I just heard on this Senate floor, but I'm not surprised that it came from a university. We kind of know what's going to come out of there before it happens. And to the senior senator from Fairfax, I would just say the chances are that a clergy member would never say, "I'm going to kill a guy with a gun." This should be up to the individual churches, the individual pastors, to make these decisions for their flock. Ladies and gentlemen, this isn't a difficult decision. Pass this bill.
Thank the senator. Do any senators other than the patron wish to be heard on Senate Bill 1024? Seeing none, Senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had no idea that my little bill would, would cause such a, such a reaction, but however, let me just point out a couple of things. First of all, I greatly agree with my colleague from Northern Chesapeake, that we ought to have prayer in schools. It was a disaster for this nation when we took prayer from schools. It was a tragedy, and it has, it has done enormous damage to this country. So we agree on that point. However, there are a couple of things. One, first, back to those statistics, as far as I know, there is no identifiable group of individuals in the Commonwealth of Virginia who are less likely to misuse a firearm than concealed carry permit holders. And that includes law enforcement officers. I'm talking about the, the rates are astounding, and I'm not sure exactly why it is. Perhaps it's the feeling that somehow they have been given a certain responsibility, and they better, they better darn well. they better darn well abide by it. But concealed carry permit holders are probably the most law-abiding group of people that you can find. But I want to get to what I think is the principal issue that I would like to address, and that is that somehow having guns present in churches is going to exclude God from those churches. I got to tell you, I've been to many places where men who were armed to defend themselves and to defend their nation went into battle, often knowing that it was very likely that they were not going to survive and they were not going to come back out. And I have no doubt that God was not excluded from their presence. I can remember many times going down from a ridgeline called New Lock San. And we would go through one of three lanes that were carved through the landmines at the top of that ridgeline. And we would work our way down that steep, steep mountain. We'd always go in the dark of the moon at night so that we couldn't be seen. And then on the east side, when we would take that route, we went through a place, it was a cut in the hill, and I always referred to it as the Valley of the Shadow of Death. Because it was a place where we ambushed there, every single man, every Marine was going to die. There was no getting out. The walls were sheer and there simply was no way out. And so I would be there staring into the darkness, barely able to make out the vaguest shadow, and shifting the selector on my M16 rifle as I pointed it upward to the top of that cut through the hill. And I always spoke the words of the 23rd Psalm. And I would say, "I fear no evil, for thou art with me; thy rod and thy staff they comfort I don't accept that God abandons those who are armed. I'm going to tell you, I've stood with groups of armed Marines where a chaplain would pray over the dead or pray before we went into battle. Not necessarily praying for a victory in battle, but praying for the souls of the individuals who were going into battle. So I just feel morally compelled to address that sort of implication, that somehow if you are armed, you are not any longer in the presence of God. I don't think that was the intent of the gentleman, but I just want to bring clarity to it. And so I do hope that you will vote for this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Question is, shall Senate Bill 1024 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, 21, noes 19.
Ayes, 21, noes 19. Senate Bill 1024 passes.
Senate Bill 1231, a bill relating disposition, excuse me, of unrestorably incompetent defendant's capital murder.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
This bill has to do with capital murder defendants who are unrestorably incompetent, meaning that they are mentally incompetent to assist their counsel in their own defense and what will happen to them in that circumstance. This would see that they receive medically appropriate treatment rather than treatment to restore them to competency after that's been tried to no avail. Further, it would see that they are not released except pursuant to court order. And they would have an option to have the competence report at any time from the director of the treatment facility or his designee, that the defendant is in fact competent, and have a hearing at that point in the court. They would also have hearings on annual basis for the first five years and then every other year. This is designed to remedy a situation in the 18th and 9th judicial circuits where we have some defendants who've never shown signs of being able to help in their own defense over many years and going through a bit of a charade to go to court over and over to find out that they're not competent and still keeping due process for them in the code. With that, I ask that we pass the bill.
Thank you, Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 1231? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1231 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, 39, noes 1.
Ayes, 39, noes 1. Senate Bill 1231 passes.
Senate Bill 1395, a bill relating to threats of death or bodily injury to a health care provider.
Senator from northern Fairfax, Senator Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me, I move the bill pass and speaking to the bill.
Senator has the floor.
Health care providers, especially nurses and emergency room medical staff, face challenging situations every single day as they serve their community. This bill, as it has been extensively amended, affords them certain protections that we already provide to teachers and school employees in the performance of their public service. It is currently a Class 1 misdemeanor to make oral threats to school employees while on a school bus or school property or at a school function. This amendment extends the same penalty for verbal threats to health care providers in a hospital or emergency care facility. And this is when the individual knows that the person is indeed a health care provider. This not only helps provide necessary protection for hospital workers, but also provides clarity for law enforcement. Verbal threats can have a significant impact on an individual's personal safety. We had an incident at the Virginia Hospital Center this past year, which is what sort of gelled in our minds the need for this bill. A man who was basically just a really rotten dude threatened the emergency room nurse. He said he was going to stalk her, follow her home, rape her, kill her, and kill her children. This was overheard by a large number of the staff at the hospital. And of course, it made it more difficult for them to perform their life-saving duties in the emergency room. This brought to the attention, really, a situation that is commonplace throughout the Commonwealth, and we're trying just to address it with this bill. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 1395? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1395 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, 28, noes 12.
Ayes, 28, noes 12. Senate Bill 1395 passes.
Senate Bill 1539, a bill relating to withholding of income for child support independent contractors.
Senator from eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Mr. President, could that bill go by for the day?
No objection, the bill will go by forward the day.
Senate Bill 1542, a bill relating to civil actions, determination of indigency.
However, Madam Clerk pronounced it is the right way to pronounce it, just for the record. All right? We'll change it in the dictionary if we need to. Senator from eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
I'll ask Senator McDougal.
Senator from eastern Fairfax, Senator Servell.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was a bill that was requested by the Virginia Poverty Law Center. Just makes it easier or streamlines the process for clerks to grant waivers of filing fees for no-fault divorces for people who run public assistance. I would hope the body would pass the bill.
Thank you, Senator. Do any other senators wish to be heard on Senate Bill 1542? Seeing none, the question is, shall Senate Bill 1542 pass? All in favor, the motion will record their vote, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk, close the roll.
Ayes, 39, noes 1.
Ayes, 39, noes 1. Senate Bill 1542 passes.
Uncontested calendar Senate Bills on second reading.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would now move all the Senate Bills on the second reading on the uncontested calendar, which would include all Senate Bills on pages 6 through 17, including Senate Bill 1041 through Senate Bill 729, being grossed in advance to the third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments. Any senator who may desire to remove a bill from the block, please do so after the clerk has read the number of that bill.
I thank the Senator. The question is, shall all Senate Bills on second reading on the uncontested calendar on pages 6 through 17, Senate Bill 1041 through Senate Bill 1729, be grossed in advance to the third reading in the block after the adoption of any amendments thereto, and that any senator desiring a bill be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the bill? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to. The clerk will read the number of the bills.
Senate Bill 1041, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute, and there is a floor amendment.
Senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Mr. President, could that be pulled from the block for purposes of amendment?
We don't need to.
Don't think you need to pull it.
Just adopt the substitute.
Want to adopt the substitute first? Senator, want to move to adopt the substitute?
Yes, Mr. President, first of all, there is a substitute.
The senator want to move?
And I would move the substitute.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is adopted. Senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I move that, I move the amendment that has been distributed on the floor. Just to give you a little bit of background, what's the?
Sorry, not to interrupt, Senator. Do you want to waive the reading of the amendment?
I waive the reading of the floor amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the reading of the floor amendment be waived? All in favor of waiving the reading will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the reading of the floor amendment is waived. Senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
Yes, speaking to the floor amendment.
Senator has the floor.
The purpose of this, the bill deals with telephone privacy protection and spam calls that are being made. We passed that without any difficulty in the committee. However, subsequently, I received a letter from the Attorney General's Office, from the chief of the Consumer Protection Section, and he recommended the amendment that you have on your desk at this time. He said that without that amendment, the bill that I have submitted would be significantly weakened and make it difficult to enforce the measure. And I think that was very, very helpful. I'm appreciative of the Attorney General's Office for providing that. And I ask that you adopt the floor amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the floor amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the floor amendment is adopted. Senator from Loudon, Senator Black.
No.
Move forward.
Mr. President, I knew I'll now move that.
Senator, we're all good. We're all good.
We're good.
Yep, we're all good, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Senator.
Senate Bill 1080, reported from the Committee for General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1098, reported from the Committee on Finance with amendments.
Senator from western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the Finance Committee amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 1128, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with amendments and from the Committee on Finance.
Senator from Hampton, Senator Locke.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we agree to the committee amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 1176, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move that the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1246, reported for the Committee on Finance with an amendment.
Senator from Spotsylvania, Senator Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendment is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1272, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 1293, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 1315, reported from the Committee on Finance. Senate Bill 1325, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
Senator from Russell, Senator Chaffin.
Mr. President, I move the committee substitute be adopted.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is adopted.
Senate Bill 1368, reported from the Committee on Finance with a substitute.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I'd ask that the committee substitute be agreed to, sir.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1371, reported from the Committee on Finance with a substitute.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would ask the committee substitute be agreed to, sir.
Thank the Senator. Question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee substitute is agreed to.
Senate Bill 1401, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1444, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1445, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1448, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1449, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1459, reported from the Committee on Finance. Senate Bill 1463, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with amendments.
Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move that the amendments be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 1538, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1568, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology with amendment.
Senator from western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendments.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 1609, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor. Senate Bill 1676, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology. Senate Bill 1696, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with amendments.
The senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendments be agreed to.
Thank the Senator. The question is, shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Senate Bill 1729, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
The question is, shall the Senate Bills be engrossed in advance to their third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the Bills are engrossed in advance to their third reading.
Regular calendar Senate Bills on second reading. Senate Bill 1019, a bill relating to referral to mediation and child custody, visitation, and support. support cases, appropriate cases, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice with a substitute.
Senator from Western Fairfax, Senator Marsden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the bill be stricken, and speaking to that motion.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to strike this bill. In further conversation and deliberation with the Supreme Court, they feel they can handle this matter administratively to clarify to judges how matters involving mediation can be handled, and when it's best, and it can best be handled in that way, and no need for a change in the code at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall Senate Bill 1019 be stricken from the calendar? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no's zero.
Ayes, forty, no's zero. The bill is stricken from the calendar.
Senate Bill 1013, a bill relating to suspension of driver's license for non-payment of fines or cost, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance with an amendment.
Senator from Franklin County, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move that the committee substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. Senator from Franklin, Senator Stanley.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do now.
Do you want to move the committee amendments?
Oh, I'm gonna, you know, Mr. President, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna now move that the committee amendment be agreed to.
I thank the senator. Question is, shall the committee amendment be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is agreed to. Senator from Franklin, Senator Stanley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now move to, I move that this bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading. Senator from Franklin, Senator Stanley. No, you don't have to do anything. I'm just.
We're all good. We're all good.
You got me. You got me. I got it.
Senate Bill 1014, relating to Interstate 73 Quarter Development Fund and Program, reported from the Committee on Finance.
Senator from Franklin, Senator Stanley.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I now move that Senate Bill 1014 be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1030, a bill relating to workers' compensation presumption of compensability for certain cancers, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute, and from the Committee on Finance.
The senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. The senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I'd ask that the bill be engrossed and passed on to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1099, a bill relating to the Department of General Services Guidance to State Public Bodies Regarding Purchases of Materials Made in the United States, reported from the Committee on Finance.
The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, I request we advance and move this fine bill on to its third constitutional reading.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1169, a bill relating to apprenticeships, racial apprentices to journeymen, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
The junior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator De Staff.
Mr. President, I request we get this bill engrossed in advance to its third constitutional reading.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1340, a bill relating to land preservation tax credits threshold for conservation value review by the Department of Conservation Recreation, reported from the Committee on Finance.
Senator from King George, Senator Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've moved the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1415, a bill relating to the regulation of public adjusters, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor.
Senator from Williamsburg, Senator Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1537, relating to the Virginia Property Owners Association Act Home-Based Businesses, reported from the Committee on General Laws and Technology.
Senator from Eastern Fairfax, Senator Sorvell.
Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1613, a bill relating to driver's license suspensions for certain non-driving related offenses, reported from the Committee for Courts of Justice, and from the Committee on Finance with an amendment.
Senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee amendment.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee amendment be adopted? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee amendment is adopted. The senator from Alexandria, Senator Eben.
I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1623, relating to confidentiality of tax information, local tax officers sharing information with local administrative officers in certain localities, reported from the Committee on Finance with a substitute.
Senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move the substitute be agreed to.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. The senator from Prince William, Senator McPike.
Mr. President, I move the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Senate Bill 1695, a bill relating to public utilities, acquisition of rights away for qualified economic development sites, reported from the Committee on Commerce and Labor with a substitute.
The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the committee substitute be agreed to.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The committee substitute is agreed to. The senior senator from Virginia Beach, Senator Wagner.
And now, Mr. President, I move that the Senate Bill 1695 be engrossed in advance to its third reading.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the bill be engrossed in advance to its third reading? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bill is engrossed in advance to its third reading.
Uncontested calendar Senate bills on first reading.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would now move all the Senate bills on the first reading on both the uncontested and regular calendar, including all Senate bills on pages 22 through 36, including Senate Bill 1,000 through Senate Bill 1715, that the rules of the Senate be suspended, and that the first constitutional reading of the titles be dispensed with.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the rules be suspended in the first reading of the titles of Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 22 through 36, Senate Bill 1,000 through Senate Bill 1715, be dispensed with? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no's zero.
Ayes, forty, no's zero. The reading of the titles is dispensed with. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would now ask that all the bills be passed by for the day, sir.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate bills on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading be passed by for the day? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The bills will go by for the day.
Uncontested calendar Senate Joint Resolution on First Reading. Senate Joint Resolution 319. We're on first reading. Sorry.
That's okay. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would now ask the bill be passed by, excuse me, the resolution be passed by for the day.
Actually, you want to suspend the rules?
Perhaps I wasn't paying attention. I thought she just read the title.
I didn't read it.
Mr. President, I'll move that all the Senate joint resolutions on both the uncontested and regular calendar on page 37 through 38, that the rules of the Senate be suspended, and that the first constitutional reading of the titles, of the titles be dispensed with.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the rules be suspended in the first reading of the titles of the Senate joint resolutions on the uncontested and regular calendars, pages 37 through 38, Senate Joint Resolution 319 through Senate Joint Resolution 306, be waived? All in favor, the motion will record their vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Do any senators desire to change their vote? Clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, forty, no's zero.
Ayes, forty, no's zero. The reading of the titles is waived. Question is, Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now ask that all the resolutions be passed by for the day, sir.
Thank the senator. Question is, shall the Senate joint resolutions on the uncontested and regular calendars now on second reading go by for the day? All in favor, the motion will say aye.
Those opposed, no.
The ayes have it. The resolutions will go by for the day.
Memorial Resolutions.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now move that all of the memorial resolutions on page 38 of the calendar, including Senate Joint Resolution 315 through Senate Resolution 85, be taken up in a block and passed in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolution with the understanding that any senator who desires to remove a memorial resolution from the block will please do so after the clerk has read the title of that resolution.
I thank the senator. Question is, shall the memorial resolutions on page 38, Senate Joint Resolution 315 through Senate Resolution 85, be considered in the block in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolutions thereof, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the title of the resolution? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk will read the titles of the memorial resolutions.
Senate Joint Resolution 315, celebrating the life of Master Sergeant Edward Colston Newton V, United States Army. Senate Joint Resolution 317, celebrating the life of Douglas Ronald Fall. Senate Joint Resolution 318, celebrating the life of the Honorable Frederick McDonnell Quayle.
Mr. President.
Senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Mr. President, I would ask that Senate Joint Resolution 318 be taken out of the block and by for the day. Just as an explanation, I really need to see if the members of this body would like to assign honors patrons to that bill.
I thank the senator. Without objection, Senate Joint Resolution 318 will be taken out of the block and will go by for the day.
Senate Resolution 85, celebrating the life of Brenda Lee Hanson Ike.
Mr. President.
Senior senator from Chesapeake, Senator Cosgrove.
Again, I apologize to the body, but I would ask that that bill be taken out of the block and by for the day.
Without objection, Senate Resolution 85 will be taken out of the block and go by for the day. The resolutions will be agreed to in the usual manner. All those in favor of agreeing to the memorial resolutions will please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Commending Resolutions.
Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, I would now move all of the commending resolutions on pages 38 and 39 of the calendar, which would include the Senate Joint Resolution 321 through Senate Resolution 99, be agreed to in the block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolution. Any senator who desires to remove a commending resolution from the block should please do so after the clerk has read the number of that resolution.
I thank the senator. The question is, shall the commending resolutions on pages 38 through 39, Senate Joint Resolution 321 through Senate Resolution 99, be considered in the block by voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions, with the understanding that any senator desiring a resolution be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution? All in favor, the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The resolutions are before us in the block. Clerk will read the numbers of the resolutions.
Senate Joint Resolutions 321, Senate Resolutions 90, 91, 99. Senate Joint Resolutions 321, Senate Resolutions 90, 91, 99.
The question is, shall the resolutions be agreed to? All in favor of agreeing to the resolutions will say aye. Those opposed, no. Resolutions are agreed to. Senator from James City County, Senator Norman.
Mr. President, inquire the clerk, does that complete today's calendar?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other business to come before the Senate? For what purpose, the senator from Prince William County, Senator McPike, rise.
Mr. President, could we return briefly to the morning hour?
Without objection, we'll return to the morning hour.
Thank you, Mr. President, I rise for the purpose of an introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Thank you. Joining us late in the gallery today are some of our fantastic city council members from the city of Manassas. We have Councilor Pam Sebeski, Michelle Davis Younger, Teresa Coats Ellis, and we also have joining City Manager Pat Pate and also Deputy City Manager Brian Foster. They're, these are part of the integral team that worked on the deal with Micron and are excited to see the $3 billion investment into Virginia. And please give them the warm welcome of the Senate, Mr. President.
I thank the senator. Would our leaders from Manassas City Council and Manassas City please rise in the gallery if you are able? You can stand up twice, we really appreciate it. Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you for your leadership in Manassas and Prince William and the Commonwealth of Virginia. We echo the eloquent words of the senator from Prince William, Senator McPike, and congratulate you on the wonderful successes that you have had and look forward to a bright, bright future there in Manassas. So, thank you and your families for stepping up in a leadership at a critical time. And I would ask everyone to please join me, extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to our distinguished guests from Manassas. For what purpose, the senator from Fairfax City, Senator Peterson, rise.
Thank you, Mr. President, I rise for a belated introduction.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, the Senate, one of the disadvantages about being back here in center field is I have no idea who's up in the gallery, but I did get a note at one point that Lawrence Webb from the Falls Church City School Board was here with his mother, Mary. I've known Lawrence for, gosh, over 20 years, a good friend of mine, and he also, my nephews attend Falls Church City Schools, which that in and of itself is a burden. So, I ask that we give him the greeting of the Senate no matter where he is.
I thank the senator, and he did have to step out, but he was here earlier. Lawrence Webb, thank you so much for joining us today in the Senate and your wonderful mother, Mary, had the privilege and pleasure of spending some time with you earlier today. Thank you for your leadership in Falls Church City. We are very grateful to you and look forward to great things to come. I would ask everybody to please join me and extend the warmest welcome of the Senate to Lawrence Webb and his wonderful mom, Mary. What purpose, the senator from Grayson, Senator Carrico, rise.
Mr. President, a brief point of personal privilege.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members of the body, it's amazing to me, and I want to say just a few things. Sitting, listening to the debate over the bill dealing with religious places of worship that we would make comments on the floor that somehow people who carry a weapon in a place of worship somehow doesn't trust God. Then, because of politics in the church, somebody's going to lose their temper and take action against people and just because they're carrying a firearm. The other part is, just because one side wants to harden a target against evil people doesn't mean anything less of how they believe in God and how they trust in God. So, I went ahead and researched a little bit, because I love the Bible and what it says, and I'll just share these two scriptures with you. Blessed be the Lord, my rock, who trains my hands for war and my fingers for battle. That was in the Old Testament. In the New Testament, Luke 1121, Jesus said, "When a strong man, fully armed, guards his own palace, his goods are in peace." Those places of worship, where I tithe, where I give offerings, is that palace, and it's my obligation and our right to defend it." Thank you.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, the senator from King George, Senator Stewart, rise.
Mr. President, rise for a quick announcement.
Senator has the floor.
Mr. President, members, I would note on the back of the calendar, there are several things happening at half an hour after or thereabouts, so I would ask that we meet in Senate Agriculture at 15 minutes after, so hopefully you can come and leave a proxy and get to wherever you need to go. We have a big docket, and I think today's going to be our last meeting, so hope everybody can get there.
Thank the senator. For what purpose, the senator from James City County, Senator Norman, rise.
Mr. President, I rise for two introductions, excuse me, two announcements, sir.
Senator has the floor.
First of all, ladies and gentlemen, on your desk is a pink sheet called Chamber Protocol Reminders from the Clerk. I would respectfully ask that you read those very commonsensical and courteous suggestions that are made to you, and I am confident that all of us, including myself, will try to comply with those. Actually, I misstated, I have three things, Mr. President. The second is, immediately upon adjournment, those senators that I spoke with, if you would please meet in the conference room immediately off the chamber immediately. The third announcement I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, this is a short session, but there's one thing in common, and that is that the halls of the Pocahontas Building and the Capitol are filled with many interested parties. There are many government-related individuals who are there advocating their clients' positions. We have been blessed over the years with some extraordinary individuals who have had a very professional presence and have worked with us, and some of them are absolutely iconic figures. Last night, we lost one of the most extraordinary government relations individuals that I have known in my 28 years here, and that is Ralph L. Bill Axel, passed away last night. Bill was an individual who remains, I think, respected by anyone that had contact with him. While he was a large man, he had an enormous heart. He was always very professional, had a wonderful demeanor. He recovered from serving in the House of Delegates from 1974 to 1990, before he went into government relations. And the firm that he joined, he ended up heading the government relations practice. He really was an extraordinary gentle and professional giant, and I would respectfully ask when we adjourn today that we adjourn in the name of Ralph L. Axel Jr.
Thank the senator. Is there any other business to come before the Senate? Seeing none, the clerk will report any announcements on the desk.
Today, Thursday, January 24th, the Education and Health Subcommittee on Higher Education will not meet. Education and Health Subcommittee on Higher Education will not meet. The Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Natural Resources will meet 15 minutes after adjournment, Senate Room A, Pocahontas Building. The Education and Health Subcommittee on Public Education will meet one half hour after adjournment, Subcommittee Room 2 in Pocahontas on the fifth floor, Senators Carrico, Donovan, Howell, Locke, and Peak. The Commerce and Labor Subcommittee on Coal Ash will meet 45 minutes after adjournment, Senate Leadership Conference Room, sixth floor, Pocahontas, Senators Chaffin, Cosgrove, and Dance. The Finance Subcommittee on Education will not meet today. The Committee on Finance will meet at 4:30 PM, Committee Room B in the Pocahontas Building. The Virginia Legislative Black Caucus will meet at 6:00 PM, Subcommittee Room 300B in the Pocahontas Building. Tomorrow, Friday, January 25th, the Committee on Rehabilitation and Social Services will meet at 8:00 AM, Senate Room A in Pocahontas. The Republican Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 2 in the Capitol. The Democratic Caucus will meet one half hour before session, Senate Room 1 in the Capitol.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there any other business to come before the Senate? Seeing none, call the senator from Bedford, Senator Newman.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate do now adjourn until 9:30 AM tomorrow. And when we do so, we do so in honor of the honorable Ralph L. Bill Axel Jr.
Thank the senator. The question is, shall the Senate stand adjourned until 9:30 AM tomorrow, and that when we adjourn, we do so in the honor and memory of the Honorable Ralph L. Bill Axel Jr.? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, Senate stands adjourned until 9:30 AM tomorrow.